All right, good evening, Ron. We're going to get started. Thank you for quieting down so quickly. Good evening. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. Superintendent Wimmer, could you confirm that this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
All right. We recognize a quorum of our board present with six members physically present, and we have Toni Schmidt participating virtually. So I'm going to ask my board members, fellow board members, to remind me that we'll need to do roll call votes tonight. I've got my roll call sheets ready, but you'll promptly remind me when I forget. So with that, next is approval of our agenda, which was published in advance. Superintendent Wimmer, I just wanted to confirm one thing. We, last time when the board met, we looked at the nepotism policy. I know that we had a policy committee meeting scheduled for this past Thursday, inclement weather, snow day. So-
So we brought that discussion because it was important, brought it here. So that isn't a discussion item only on this agenda with legal counsel, just so that we can get at those questions and then send back group discussion to the policy committee at a future meeting.
Great.
And we do meet this Thursday again, I believe.
Thank you, appreciate that. With that, I would make a motion to approve our agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dancy. Motion and second to approve. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Zweigert votes yes. Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We move to recognitions. And first, we have state recognition for the East Dance Team, and I believe Molly Hengst is going to guide us through that. Good evening.
Good evening, thanks for having us. Ms. Fowler and I are here to share some exciting results from our winter season. Well, actually, Dance Team is a little bit more excited than that. So we have a lot of accomplishments to celebrate here tonight. I'm going to start with the East Dance Team. I'm going to call up my head coach, Amanda Resswood.
Hello, I'm Amanda Resswood. I am the head coach of the East varsity dance team. We had a really exciting year this year. Like Molly said, it's an extensive season. We run basically May through March, so we're at the end now, but what's been really exciting that happened for us this year is we took the regional championship in D2 Kick. Not sure when was the last time East has been regional champions, but that is very exciting for us. And then we also got to go to State just a few weeks ago with our kick routine, and we were able to place fifth in Kick right behind some of the most well-known dance schools in high school dance world. So again, really exciting for us, and with such a small team taking fifth is phenomenal. So really proud of the girls. We had a great season. So starting over here, we have Ariana, who is our only junior.
And then we have Reagan, Michaela, Aubrey, Marley, Gia, who are all juniors, or sophomores. And then Maya is a freshman. We've got Chloe, who is also a sophomore. And then down on the end is Sarah. She is a senior, and she's our captain this year. And then we are missing our other senior Caitlin, as well as one of our freshmen Ella, who couldn't be here tonight. But this is the team. They did a great job. We had a great season, and I know everyone is super proud of them. Thank you.
Can you guys look up here and give Peggy a big smile for the picture?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And we invite forward Ellen Ferber, Erin Felber, our West Athletic Director, for state recognition for the West Dance Team.
Hello, thank you for having us as well. I'm excited to introduce our West dancers who qualified for State, and Coach Julia Palmer is going to come up. And dancers, come join her, please.
Excellent. They arranged themselves so nicely. I am Julia Palmer. I'm the coach of the West Bend West Dance Team. We have had just a phenomenal season this year. We placed third out of 14 teams at our regionals for our pom routine, and then we were able to take that pom routine to State this past couple of weeks ago. And then at State, we placed sixth out of 10 placings, which was really phenomenal. Also at State, we had all three of our solos qualify in the top half at regionals, and they were also able to perform at State, which was a really exciting experience for those three dancers. And truly, it's very exciting for all of us to just be able to go to State. We were so happy with our regional placing. Third out of 12 teams, third out of 12 teams was incredible for all of us, and we have just been so excited for our season this past season. So we'll go from seniors all the way down to freshmen, and I'll introduce them. And then I'll also highlight the dancers that had solos at State as well. So starting all the way on the end, we have Lacey, a senior. Then Lauren, a senior, she had a solo at State. Rachel, a senior, she had a solo at State. Elena is a junior. Caitlin is a junior, she had a solo at State. Then we have Addison, a sophomore. Riley, a sophomore. Evelyn, a freshman, excuse me. Natalie, a freshman, and then Audrey, a freshman. And then tonight, we're also missing Iris and Olivia, two of our juniors as well. Sadly, they had to work and could not come be recognized, but they were also a phenomenal part of our team this year. Congrats, girls.
And the dancers, if you want to like, wave at your parents, I think Ms. Felber also wants to photograph.
I'll get it from-
Right. Thank you. Thanks to everyone for coming. You know, as a board member, I always appreciate these presentations. We always often emphasize the importance of academics, and that's really important. But these types of sports and activities, I think, also reinforce values that are going to get you far in life, which is teamwork and discipline and focus. So congratulations on your accomplishments. What I'm going to do now is, we're going to- All right. What we'll do now is, we're going to move on to the public participation portion of our agenda, but realizing that it is a school night, we're just going to pause in the event anyone wishes to leave. However, we always encourage people to stay if they'd like, so.
They have a lot of homework to do.
Yeah. We know it's a school night. That's right. We'll just pause while the, while the audience clears. All right, while the audience is clearing, we've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. I have four public participation comment cards. I'll do a last call for comment cards. Anyone else who wishes to enter one? I believe so. All right. I think we have, we have four of them. So what I will do is, I will read Board Policy 187. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures for this segment. To summarize the policy at this time, but copies of this policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant common card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name. In relation to the district, this information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as they guarantee a fair and timely response. I'll now invite participants forward to speak. There will be a visible timer to help manage your time. I'll mention who's up and then who's on deck. And also, to help that all participants are heard and that the meeting runs efficiently, please abstain from conversation, comment, or applause during or after public participation comments. So with that, our first card was from Ms. Jody Geenan. So I'll invite Ms. Geenan to the podium, and Joan Lane will be on deck. Ms. Geenan, you've indicated on the card that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. The next three minutes are yours.
Okay. I am concerned about our school district's transparency with the public. The videos of our school board meetings are now taking up to four days to be posted. We used to be able to see them on the day or within a day or two. The website actually stated that it would be four days until a video was posted, and this was a day or two after the meeting had happened. I learned that our school district switched from having our own in-house IT specialist to a different organization. In the age of technology, we should expect that things would get more efficient instead of less efficient. When there is only two weeks between regular meetings and less between committee meetings, having the public wait nearly a week to view the meetings is unacceptable. I watch other live-streamed programming that is uploaded for immediate recorded viewing. When issues of concern are raised in the meetings and the public is unable to view what was actually said for days, rumors can and do take effect. There are also inconsistencies with the school district website, agenda and meeting minutes, at least where the school board is concerned. Sometimes, I cannot pull up the agenda on the tab at the top of the homepage, but if I scroll down to the bottom, I can pull it up with the board docs. Other times, I can pull it up at both places, but I can't pull up the board docs in one place or the other. The minutes are missing sometimes for weeks on end. The agenda is not clear where it should be unless board docs are utilized, but many people do not know about board docs. For example, when policies are listed for review and votes, there are no notations as to what policies are in question. Most of them could be marked with a word or two, such as nepotism, discipline, controversial issues, et cetera. In the very least, there could be a note reminding the public that more information can be found at board docs. Third, when there are larger issues, such as weather, to remove important policies like nepotism, especially when the administration claims there are possible legal ramifications if we keep a policy that has never been the subject of legal ramifications in the past, at least to my knowledge and anybody I've spoken with, let the public hear the claims directly from the legal counsel making the claims. It sounds like due to bad weather, canceling the policy meeting, this might happen tonight. I hope he gives us actually the, the legal stuff that shows us where he thinks it's going to be violated. Also, please give us an opportunity to hear from more than one legal source. Some attorneys may have more experience working with nepotism laws than the attorney our school district is relying on. Another attorney may find that our school district is setting itself up for more legal problems by removing the policy or the wording that was approved by legal counsel six years ago than by leaving it in. These examples of lack of transparency from this board leads the public to wonder if there is something to hide. Maybe there's nothing to hide, but that's why we need to make the transparency a little bit more clear. Thank you.
Thank you. We move to our next speaker, Joan Lane, invite to the podium, and Bill Schultz will be on deck. Ms. Lane, you've indicated you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
I am.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Okay. My name is Joan Lane, and I am here representing myself as a CPA. I am part of the Wisconsin CPA group, and April is National Financial Literacy Month. And they hold a program called Reading Makes Sense, where a member can volunteer and go to a classroom and do books with the kids. And last March, first of all, I worked for a school district for eight years as a finance director, so I understand everybody's busy. But last March, I contacted one of our local grade schools, left a message with a reading specialist, head reading specialist, no return call. Left another message, no return call. Left a message with the principal of that school, no return call. Went on to a different grade school, left a message with the principal, no return call. Then I went to the administration and left a message with one of the administrators, no return call. So basically, what I'm looking for is, I just want to know whether it falls within the curriculum, whether it's even something that can be done. I'm trying to volunteer my, my time. I ended up going to a local private school, and it really engaged the kids, just talking about it. It was Bernstein bears trouble with money, and it kind of got them talking about, you know, what they save for and immediate needs and things like that. And it was very interesting conversation with third graders. So I'm looking for, I guess, just a connection with somebody or even somebody from the curriculum area that can tell me whether or not you introduce different programs like this in the school district or whether it's very defined, which it could be, which is fine. I just want a yes or no. That's it.
Thank you.
I think that sounds like a topic our superintendent should be able to follow up with you and her staff right away. So thank you for speaking tonight.
Thank you. Our third speaker is Mr. Bill Schultz, and our last speaker tonight will be Bart Williams. Mr. Schultz, you've indicated you are a resident, parent, and have students enrolled in the district. Is that correct?
And a resident, board member, attendee, yes.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
So last week, Wednesday, I met up with Superintendent Wimmer, and we discussed multiple topics. One of them was the nepotism policy. I understand the curriculum, or excuse me, the policy committee meeting was canceled due to poor weather. I am in support of keeping the policy as it stands, at least for right now, due to the fact that there is, I would consider a conflict of interest due to one of the school board candidates does have a family member as defined by the nepotism policy that works for the school. But along with, along with this, I took it upon myself, and I, I watched the last school board meeting when Lenny Hanson, HR director, spoke for a few minutes about this policy. I also watched the last, I believe, two policy committee meetings that discussed this nepotism policy. And along with that, all I gathered and all I heard was that it breaks the state statute. Okay, well, that's very vague. Two things I would like to know specifically would be what either one or other state statutes is this nepotism policy breaking and how. I understand we may have legal counsel here tonight, and I would appreciate whoever is representing to answer these questions, but to a previous speaker's point, maybe we should, you know, bring in another outside source to get another opinion that has experience with this. So thank you all for your time, and have a great night.
Thank you. And our fourth and final speaker is Mr. Bart Williams. Mr. Williams, it, the card indicates you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Correct.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Good evening. I drafted West Bend School District Nepotism Policy 511.1 while on the board. I worked with the HR director then on this fair and effective policy. After her review, found that about 20% of all district employees were related, i.e. family members of existing employees. This policy passed the Wisconsin Association of School Boards' legal review. This policy protects our school district and taxpayers from serious regulatory compliance, legal, financial, reputational, employee turnover, and other liabilities. Given the public tax dollars involved, all district stakeholders deserve hiring the most qualified employees, what you know, instead of hiring members of existing employees who you know. If policy was enforced, that 20% has likely decreased due to employee attrition. Getting rid of our nepotism policy would start us regressing toward that formerly 20% nepotism and expose us to serious liabilities. Let's say the objectively most qualified high school social studies teacher applies but is not hired. Instead, a less qualified person applies and is hired because he has four relatives working in our district. The past over candidate could sue our district citing unfair hiring practices, especially nepotism. Her attorney would likely demand to know if we did a nepotism study, yes. If we ever had a policy, a nepotism policy, yes, adopted May 17th, I'm sorry, March 17th of 2017. Why we got rid of it, no good reasons. We could very easily lose this case, be ordered to pay huge financial damages plus court costs, court costs, attorney's fees, et cetera, reinstate our nepotism policy, enforce it, and provide evidence to the court for years of our compliance. If played out publicly, our reputation is ruined, making recruiting and retention of quality teachers and staff very hard. All three pieces, laws, policies, and the employee handbook are necessary for the board to effectively monitor and enforce a policy, like three legs of a well-balanced stool. Only as its own significant policy and the importance and visibility that policies convey can board members efficiently monitor this and other policies in practice. I question the timing of the proposed removal of the nepotism policy now, during a campaign. One candidate is seriously compromised because he has an employee who is a family member working in our district. So the best thing to do, if there's concerns about legal liability of the current nepotism policy, then bring forward your legal opinion on that in writing so that the entire public can scrutinize it, research it, get our own opinion, and so forth. Put it out there fully transparent for everyone to see. I firmly believe that if that is done, everyone will be able to clearly see the bigger liability is in getting rid of our current nepotism policy as is, as it reduces our liability. Finally, since this has become a big political issue during this campaign, I respectfully recommend and request that the full board and administration put off any final action on this policy until after the election. So until early May, at least or at earliest. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public participation portion of our agenda. So we will move on then to our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have minutes of the February 6, 2023, regular board meeting and executive session, one contract, no resignations, no retirements, and revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through January 31 of 2023. I would move to approve the consent agenda. Would there be a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Ms. Zweigert votes yes. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Great, that motion carries. Moving on, after the consent agenda, we have discussion, and we are on to Nepotism Policy 511.1. Superintendent Wimmer and I believe Mr. Hanson are going to kick off this discussion topic.
That's a perfect segue. As we noted, we had intended, based on some public comments, some questions that had arisen, that we would be bringing that back to a policy committee. Again, with the school cancellation, we're bringing that discussion here, and sometimes we do that. We get a little input from the full board before the policy committee does its work. So we'll do that today. We do have legal counsel present, but we thought we'd build a little background for you. So a couple pieces, and I put this in the memo. So we previously reviewed this last April. As has been our practice, we wanted to take a look at each chunk of series of policies because we knew that we needed to get back to a cycle of consistent review. So that's something the team's been really dedicated. That's why you see us meet, you know, we were meeting back to back. We meet whenever our schedules allow to get through that important work. But before we start that next chunk, we kind of pick up all those ones that were lingering. So on that one agenda, we had made it through all the 300s, and we knew before we started the 400s, what do we still have lingering out there? So there's that gap in time, the next available time before the new series started. We picked up, you know, the, the 100 around a renumbering, this 500, a couple 300s that needed attention. So just to, to talk about, you know, especially our intent to be transparent, that's the why behind the timing. For us to have done anything else would have been disingenuous to the directive from the committee as well as the board. If I said, oh, you know, wait, I've, I've got some candidates this might impact or something, and to, for us to make that decision, to delay or not bring it forward would be going against the directive from our, our committee of board members. So that's kind of the timing piece of the why. Also, too, as part of our work, we went through and got the updated legal guidance, and as you said, Mr. Hanson spoke to that. We've also gone back from the prior discussion. I've gotten to speak to former board- I've gotten to speak to former board members. They've, multiple former board members have provided some feedback in writing, some good questions, some of the whys and what they were thinking when they developed this policy. We also spoke with the former HR director who was part of that. We also went back and looked through the notes of their written legal guidance at the time because there was the assumption that the statute didn't change, but did our legal guidance change? It's largely unchanged and Mr. Waterman, while he was not the attorney at the time, there was a different attorney. I'm sure he can speak to some of those pieces, the recommendations and the why. I think the largest thing for us to reinforce is this is a local board decision. So it is absolutely our job to vet things, to recommend them, to go through things. One of the things that we said was, while this is a recommendation and you can package these in handbooks, you can package them in policy, you can rely on state statutes. We also gave you a potential red line version if you were to keep such a policy, noting it was recommended by that legal guidance, that we do some editing to it. So I think that's the decision. One of the things that I would further recommend to the committee is if that's something that the board wants to keep, we might want to consider having that separated or maybe some better editing so it really delineates, because that policy is covering two entities, right? It's covering the staff as well as board. And for clarity's sake, because again, you're writing policy to guide you, but you also want your end users, your public, to be able to see and understand that. So you may end this as a board with keeping what you have. You could end this with saying, let's see what it looks like in two. There's a lot of different ways. So just introducing then Mr. Waterman, who I know is here, come on up, to provide some of that legal guidance so you can hear that directly from him. And then if you have any specific questions, please feel free to ask and then we'll kind of take that information. I would foresee we'd have a discussion in committee and get a little bit further direction. If that committee would like us to draft multiple things, we can kind of have that discussion there and then go forward and then reengage legal counsel based on the committee's feedback. So just so we know, there's no imminent decisions, there's lots of different pathways. And with that, I'll turn it over to you for some legalese.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Glad to be with everyone. Again, I'm Brian Waterman, district's legal counsel. You know, to echo what Superintendent Wimmer said, really creating policy, modifying policy, reviewing policy, it's a legislative function that the school board partakes in. And so really you have a lot of options here. And as she said, you could keep the current policy, you could remove the policy, you could modify the policy, you could break it up. There's all kinds of things that can be done here. It seemed from the public comments, there might have been a little bit of misunderstanding about the legal guidance. As Superintendent Wimmer mentioned, we did go back and look at the files. The attorney at that time had expressed a similar concern that I did when I was asked to look at the policy most recently. And I don't know if anyone has it in front of them, but specifically, in the first paragraph of your current policy related to nepotism, the last two sentences really caught my eye. And the reason they did is because it talks about board members not participating in any manner in any aspect of employment policies which affects a family member. And, you know, if you know anything about the ethics, the Government Accountability Board, which is now the Ethics Commission at the state level, and their opinions, this is a topic that's come up before and they've weighed in on how they interpret the civil laws in which their, ethics laws, which they are meant to enforce. And what they've said is, because this does come up once in a while, where you have perhaps a school board member who has a family member who's also employed, there are times when that conflict of interest can be mitigated and there's times when it can't. And when it can't be mitigated, the Government Accountability Board had said in their opinion that really, in that case, that's when you recuse yourself as a board member. And there are other issues such as general policies, employment policies, that might not have a material impact or a direct impact on the spouse or family member of the board member in a way that it wouldn't impact others, in which case it's reasonable to allow that board member to participate. And so what struck me is, we may have an issue here with the way that those two sentences are laid out in the policy that would deny a properly elected school board member to engage in the district business that they've been elected to participate in. And so that was the concern. And again, I looked back and I saw that the prior guidance that was provided also raised that issue. It didn't stop the board at the time from going ahead and passing that and that's the board's prerogative, just as it is now. But it's our job as legal counsel to raise some of those issues and let you know of some potential liability. So that's kind of where we landed here. Consistent advice on the policy and lots of options for the board. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Can I just start with a general question? And as it relates to Chapter 19, I believe it is, of the Wisconsin statutes, which contains the ethical, the ethics provisions. In Wisconsin law, let's take zoning ordinances, for example. I'm not a zoning expert, but in the statute, it says, here's a baseline, but if you, as a local municipality, want to be more strict, the statutes allow that. I wasn't able to find anything specific in Chapter 19 that allows it. In fact, I found a provision, let's see, where is it here? If I can find it. I realize you don't have it in front of you, but something perhaps it would be useful to the policy committee. It talks about, the statute says, any county, city, village, or town may enact an ordinance establishing a code of ethics, but it says nothing about school boards. So I guess my general question is, do we as a school board, kind of following up with what you were saying before, have the ability to pass a stricter ethics statute than what already exists in the statutes?
Good question. The answer is yes, you do. And lots of districts, yours included, has an ethics policy. And that policy basically echoes the statute that you're referring to. Now, you guys also have a separate nepotism policy, which is also permitted, and you can do that. The issue becomes when you've made it so strict that perhaps it violates the rights of others. In this case, the concern was other board members who might want to be able to participate in the business of the district, but wouldn't be allowed to because of an overly strict policy.
But that, I mean, you're talking about superior law, correct? Of why we, why we're able to restrict it down further than, let's say, a state? We can't, we can't restrict it down less according to superior law, correct? So what Chris is saying is we can restrict it down or we can, we can change it so we can have stricter guidelines in our school system than what the state statute says.
That's correct.
So that, I mean, that would basically say that per legal guidance, it's too restrictive. That doesn't make any sense then.
Frank, can you get into, I think, one of the nuances are, I can write a lot of things. When I start trying to enforce certain things, the exposure of liability for the district and where that line would be for us?
Sure. And, you know, you hear a lot of attorneys talk about taking things on a case-by-case basis and this is one of those instances. So first, let me answer your question. And they're not in conflict. You can, as a school board, create policies that are stricter than the law. But like any policy, if you draft it in a way or enforce it in a way that might interfere with another's rights, then the law would likely say, if it were challenged, that that is an overreach. And so that's the concern. And I'm not saying it's a definite. You could have this policy for 50 years, no one could ever challenge it and you might be just fine. But my job as the district's counsel is to let you know when there's a potential that there might be liability there if someone were to challenge.
I guess I just see it as, you know, the state decided to change our state, our state laws for concealed carrying or Second Amendment rights. And that hasn't been an overreach, but this is. It just seems kind of backwards to me.
Well, so if the state grants a right, for instance, to an individual and allows a body, a governing body, to create additional clarification or stricter rules around that, they still can't create a rule that in a way would violate a different right of an individual, if that makes sense. So I'm not saying that you can't make narrower policy. You do it all the time, you know, and I think you have an obligation to in a lot of respects. But I'm worried about the language here that it infringes on certain rights of others.
I guess I just see that we do that all the time, you know? We restrict what you can and can't say on a, you know, standing up there at the pulpit or at the podium during public participation. You can't come up here and swear. So we restrict the speech of our people coming up and talking. You know, I think just a policy like this just obviously keeps and ensures the public trust, you know, in the board. Because I wouldn't want to even be in a situation where someone thinks I'm acting in a conflict of interest, but, oh, it's okay because, you know, we're not as restrictive here, so I'm allowed to do that, even though I probably shouldn't.
You raise a good analogy, one that governs the ability of the board to regulate speech at a podium in a public session, for instance, in a public forum. You can create, as a board, you can create all kinds of rules regarding someone can't get up and speak obscenities, you know, they can only speak for a certain time period, they have to be somehow affiliated with the district. You can do all those things. You couldn't, however, discriminate on the content of someone's speech, viewpoint discrimination. That's a good example of how you can make those rules, but the rules can't be made in a way that then would violate the rights of others. And again, to Superintendent Wimmer's point, so much of this is about enforcement, right? Because again, one of the reasons I think that, you know, you haven't had a problem and you may never have a problem with the language as is, is because it hasn't been enforced in a way. You haven't had to, you haven't had to enforce it. If you did, then it might be subject to challenge, it might not be. But again, it's just a concern that's been raised by legal counsel so that you guys can make an informed decision.
With regard to policies, and maybe I'm looking at this the wrong way, I think of them kind of on two extremes. You know, one is more so around procedure, procedural policy. So for instance, tonight, I reminded my board members, oh, because we've got a board member who's participating virtually, all board members are, I'll use the word forced, forced to vote by roll call. But that doesn't really seem to infringe on anyone's rights. On the other hand, if we pass the board policy that said, no board member can vote on a Monday if their first name begins with C, that'd probably be restrictive, even though the board could pass it. And that doesn't seem more procedural, that seems more fundamental, the fundamental rights of an elected official. So am I looking at that correctly? Because I realize it's a continuum, right? When do you cross the line? All depends on the case.
Right. That's true. And I do think that's a good way to look at it. I think that's a good perspective when you're looking at this policy. You know, and the situation that we're talking about really is if you have a sitting board member, let's say they have a spouse, is a teacher, and they want to engage in discussion and they want to vote on an issue that the law allows them to do, in fact, it protects that right, because that's the right of the electorate, to elect someone and have them represent them in district business. And if they're denied that right, the electorate and the individual who's been elected to participate, based on something that's not justified by law, it's only justified by policy because there's been an narrowing of the policy by the board, then I think that would be problematic.
Melanie?
Yeah. So my question is, is there a state statute that says that you can't restrict a board member from being on a board if there's family employed by the district?
Sure. So we look at a few different authorities, legal authorities. One is common law, right? So there's cases that address those kind of issues and the right for, again, an elected official to participate in the government they've been elected to engage in. There's also the Government Accountability Board decisions or opinions that I've talked about.
Is there, though, just to follow up, is there a specific statute that says a board member may not be seated as a board member if they have an immediate family member employed by the district?
No, there's nothing restricting. There's nothing on it either way. You know, there's very few restrictions as far as the qualifications to become a school board member that are set forth in the statutes and that's not something that's addressed by them.
I'll just add, from everything I looked at, the only thing that state statutes say is that a board member cannot vote or take part in any dealings that involve money, basically, anything with money or, you know, salaries or anything. And that's why I see a huge gap with this is because we're opening ourselves up to basically insider dealing, you know? That's the way I see it. And by widening, widening the stance that we're taking with the policy, I think is just, I mean, companies do it all the time. You can't insider trade because you're at this level and you know what's coming in a company. And that's, you know, I just see, I guess I would see, you would get in situations like that. How would you not?
Yeah, and I think the public policy issue you're talking about is a good one to pay attention to, for sure. You know, and I would never suggest that, you know, favoritism or nepotism to where it demonstrates favoritism would be tolerated.
But we would open it up by removing some of this verbiage.
I don't think you'd be removing the verbiage. Our recommendation would be that we would be modifying it so we make sure, just those two sentences, so we would make sure that it's not an issue and you don't expose yourself to further liability in a different way.
How would you suggest that we would modify it?
Sure, I think there's some proposed...
So that is, if anyone's looking at the attachments, it's on board docs, it's on those pieces. Even in the very first committee, we use a markup one and, Brian, I've got that for you. It was just based on our initial conversation. You had given us a couple red lines to look at and to pay attention to those edits there in there. Look there. So again, we presented that, those full times. I think that's, I think that's where the conversation, what recommendations do you have for editing to keep this? We actually came up with and tightened a little bit more around the staff for those recommendations and then just looking at where we would want to set our modifications or edits in some language that had come up. So I think you're seeing that in front of you too. Again, those couple sentences as well as, like I said, a couple pieces where we really needed to step in and have a more robust discussion to determine what, if any, edits should be present.
And really, to answer the question, I mean, those edits reflect a widening of the things that a duly elected board member would be able to participate in. Ultimately, you know, when you look at liability for that kind of thing, it's an individual's liability and something that the individual makes a determination on whether or not to recuse themselves, whether or not it's appropriate, whether or not they've got, you know, so many conflicts that they can't perform their duties. That's something that the individual's responsible for, not necessarily the board, although the board has tools that it can regulate its own members, certainly. But what the revised language, our proposed revised language for those two sentences would do in particular, would just recognize that there are situations in which board members can discuss, can vote on matters that might have some sort of indirect impact on their spouse or family member who's employed by the district. Because that's what the Government Accountability Board has said in their opinions and that's generally recognized by the law.
And go ahead, Nancy?
So I guess, just to give us maybe a little more clear cut, so an example. So we as a board, we as a board will discuss salaries in general for teachers. We're not calling upon Mr. Smith or Mrs. Smith, you know, we're not calling people out. We're saying, you know, we're going to give an X percentage increase for cost of living or whatever that may be, or perhaps maybe there's a change in classification or whatever, just I'm trying to come up with all the scenarios. We're never actually calling out an individual teacher. You know, that's a large class of people. How many teachers do we have? 400 and whatever? Thank you. So I mean, really, I'm just struggling a little bit because we as board members are not supervising any one teacher. Our only employee is the superintendent. So I'm just struggling to kind of connect the dots here on how, you know, so perhaps you give us some examples that would explain it better.
Yeah, that's a great idea and a great example. And what the law says, or what the guidance says, I should say, not the law, but the guidance, the ethics guidance says is, a school board member shouldn't be voting on the compensation or benefits, even in a larger consideration context such as teacher salaries in general, or even a budget, if the salaries haven't already been determined and the budget contains those salaries. Health plan providers and benefits, benefit plans, those are the kind of things that the guidance suggests someone should recuse themselves from taking on those kind of issues. You know, on the other hand, when you're talking about general employment policies, you know, I think the example that the guidance uses are, you know, teacher work hours, teacher workdays, things like that. The guidance says that those are the types of things, those policies are generally the types of things that someone who had a spouse or immediate family member could discuss and vote on, as long as it didn't result in their spouse or immediate family member receiving a benefit that was any way different than similarly situated employees. So, you know, we talked about case-by-case basis before. That's certainly how it would be here under your policy and under state law. And so that would have to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. But it's also, as I mentioned, it's an individual decision. So there's lots of board members who, and this comes up a lot, I mean, you know, small towns, for instance, where the pool, labor pool isn't that large and you have, you know, board members who have family members, may sometimes multiple family members. And those individuals on the board make those decisions based on, you know, state statute, based on policies, if the district has a policy, about whether or not to recuse themselves in any particular situation. And often, they don't come to the district's attorney because you, as a governing And often, they don't come to the district's attorney, because you, as a governing body, are my client. The board's my client, not any individual member. And so, those members will have, seek their own legal advice from their own attorney, which is what I recommend if that kind of conflict ever arises.
Thank you. I think you bring up a good point. One of the pieces that we do when we seat new board members, and John and Melanie, the newest, can attest to this, it's pretty rigorous onboarding, where we're going through different things. And then, after that kind of first Monday when everyone's seated, we do a general review of policies now, kind of where those conflicts lie, looking at that piece, so that people are well-informed before they're taking that seat. And then, as you were saying before, you're guiding the district, but it's our job, especially mine, to guide individual board members if we're seeing something, we have to speak to something. So, many of you are parents of kids who are currently in the district. You know, we're always looking at, you know, how am I serving as a board member versus maybe my individual parent hat on? Those kinds of things. So, it needs to be part of onboarding and part of that ongoing work that you do with the board, with each other, with me as the superintendent, to understand and revisit any policy, to determine how that's executed, too.
So, with regard to benefits, just following up on what you were saying, Attorney Waterman, and following up on something that John brought up, I found the exact same thing. There was a statute, let's see, 19.591(c), which says, "Except as otherwise provided, no local public official may take any official action substantially affecting a matter in which the official, a member of his or her immediate family, or an organization with which the official is associated, has a substantial financial interest." So, that seems to address. But two, just two paragraphs down, it says, "This paragraph does not prohibit a local official from taking any action concerning the lawful payment of salaries or employee benefits." So, that would seem to indicate that, at least according to the state statute, it's all right for a local official to take action on salary and benefits.
So, I would say that, again, the guidance suggests that, and I'd have to look at the statute more carefully.
Fair point.
I don't have it in front of me, but the guidance suggests that that would be improper to discuss and vote on something that would have a substantial benefit to their spouse or themselves.
But as it relates to a general class, like Ms. Justin was talking about, an X percent raise for all teachers, different story?
It could be, I'd have to look more into it.
Fair point. Then, the last question that I have is, let's assume we keep this policy exactly the same as it is, and we make no changes. And a week, or a month, or a year from now, someone issues a complaint with regard to a school board member that they took an improper vote. I looked at the policy, it doesn't say what the enforcement provisions are. So, I guess the question is, what power do we have as a board to stop? We can't unseat a board member, can we? I mean, what do we do? Is it a matter of, no, that's got to be taken to the Ethics Commission? What happens? I guess that's the question, it's great to talk about this, but let's say it happens, what do we do about it?
Sure, so there's a number, I mentioned before, there's a number of tools that you guys as a board have to help regulate your fellow members. And that, you know, oftentimes, that takes the form of censure. Sometimes it takes the form of removing somebody as an officer, or from a committee assignment. You know, sometimes it looks, sometimes it looks a little different, where in the extreme case, you might refer the individual to the district attorney, who has the ability to, you know, work with a judge who could remove the individual. You don't see that very often, except for very extreme cases, which is why I hesitate to use it under these circumstances. But certainly, there are some tools that you have as a board. Now, that being said, you can't deny somebody the ability to come in and participate. If they want to participate, and they're elected official, you know, that's for them to make that determination. And as Superintendent Wimmer said, you know, she can advise, because ultimately, she's responsible for, you know, helping to ensure that the board is following the law, but, you know, she can't stop them, and neither can you. You can only take action in response to that.
Great, and when I bring up that question, not because I'm necessarily opposed to it, it's a matter of, well, let's educate ourselves, if something would happen, what are we going to do? And it sounds like the answer is, we can't lock somebody out of the meeting.
Exactly. So, another good example of a tool is, in the rare case where you have a school board member who presents a safety threat, or who has engaged in behavior that you believe is not appropriate to be, you know, on school grounds. You can take action to not permit them to come on school grounds, but that can't apply to a duly authorized and convened meeting of the school board. They're still allowed to come and participate. Gets back to that participation portion that we can't deny them, but there are certainly other steps that can be taken. And I guess, you know, when we talk about enforcement and, you know, the risk that we've talked about here tonight, that's where it comes in, is if you, as a board, tried to take some measure, even something as simple as a censure. You know, we've seen cases that have gone all the way to the Seventh Circuit or the Supreme Court about school boards or governing bodies taking action against their own members, and then that member challenging it on various grounds. And this is, we simply are here to point out that this is one ground on which someone who, if enforced against them, could take action based on this policy. And not the whole policy, but certain elements of the policy.
If I'm not mistaken, most of our policies don't have anything that says how we're going to enforce, you know, something like that if we were to go against them. So, I guess it wouldn't, you know, I guess I would just think, you know, you get elected as a board member, and, you know, the community might have an idea of what's in the policies, and they're assuming you're going to follow them in good faith. And by taking this out, you're basically, you know, again, I'll just say that, you know, ensure the public trust on the board. You know, you keep this in, and you're kind of upheld to a standard that's already in here, and that's what the people expect. I don't know how you can remove it.
Well, and I think you raise a good point. I don't think the absence of enforcement provisions is something that necessarily makes the policy bad. I think it's more a matter of setting expectations for board members, that if we have to execute it, how does it get done? Do we call the Ethics Commission, do we call the district attorney, what do we do? And it seems a bit unclear, you talked about censure. Can you spend 30 seconds just talking about what's the legal effect of that?
Sure.
What does that do?
There's no significant legal effect, it's more symbolic. And so, it's really a message to the electorate that you, as a board, have determined that one of your own members is not fulfilling their responsibility or not acting in a way that reflects the integrity of the board, and you're making a statement to them about that.
Your firm represents a lot of school districts in the state. Do you get calls regularly asking for guidance on some of these case-by-case type situations?
Certainly, all the time.
Very regular.
All the time, whether it's, you know, nepotism. Conflict of interest is a huge area. When you talk about, you know, practicing school law, you get lots of calls on that. Because, again, every case is a little different, and, you know, there's lots of different interpretations of the guidance, of the statutes. You have criminal codes involved as well, under some conflict of interest issues, you have policies. You know, most, if not all, school districts, like I said, have conflict of interest policies. Sometimes they vary in certain ways, or they're more defined than the statute. So, those are issues that come up all the time and require some real careful analysis.
I just have one more question. Who is liable if somebody doesn't, like, recuse themselves on a vote that perhaps they should have done? Is it just the individual, or is it the district, or how does that work?
The individual's liable. However, I have seen efforts by those who challenge, and sometimes it's politically motivated, sometimes not, but challenges to board action based on an individual's participation who shouldn't have, arguably shouldn't have participated. More likely, it's going to be a matter of individual liability for the individual elected official who chooses to engage in something that might be contrary to the conflict of interest laws, or even a policy.
The converse, then, if there is someone who, a board member or the entire board believes is, has experienced a conflict of interest and votes nonetheless, and challenges it, and it turns out that the individual who voted was right, does that action, does the prosecution of that school board member by the other school board raise individual liability on the other members of the school board who challenged it? I know I said that very, very obtusely, I'm so sorry.
No.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. I'm aware of a recent case, I forget what, at the federal court level, I can't remember whether it went to the Supreme Court or whether it stayed at the Court of Appeals level, where an individual was cens, a school board member, I believe, was censured and claimed that it was done based on discriminatory reasons, you know, based on, for political reasons, discriminatory reasons, and that individual prevailed against their school board. Whether that translates into individual liability, I don't think in that context, although perhaps, you know, the law's a little uncertain, you don't see many cases that get to that point. But certainly, I could see claims by an individual school board member who might have been wrongly censured, for instance, private action against individual school board members. So, you know, as I'm sure you all, you know, when you do your onboarding, I'm sure you're all told, you know, that, yes, you're part of a governing body, and that's where you draw your authority, but you can also have individual liability for your, personal liability for your individual actions, which isn't covered by statutory immunity, for instance. And so, that's always something you keep in mind, you know, when you're presenting yourself or, you know, representing yourself as an elected official, and I think this is very similar. If you're going to take action as a body, if you're going to vote as an individual, if you're going to make comments as an individual about someone's participation, and whether you think or not they should be participating or not under your policies or under the applicable statutes, you know, you want to stop and think and do some analysis, which is, you know, to your point, it's exactly why so many districts call their legal counsel and say, here's our situation. You know, let's think through this, let's evaluate to make sure that we're making the best decision with the information we have.
Nancy?
So, again, just an example, because I like simple examples. So, I'm a sitting school board member. My child gets hired as the assistant dance coach, okay? And that's not true, but we're just using this as my example. And we, as a board, accept and move forward on a recommendation to give all coaches a 3% salary increase across the board. I should, according to this policy, recuse myself from that.
According to this policy, yes, as written, yes.
As written.
Correct.
So, your spouse or your child gets a part-time gig as a custodial in the evening, and again, we decide we're going to give a cost of living adjustment for 1% across the board to all custodial. A current school board member should recuse themselves from that as well.
Well, so, I want to do a little more analysis, and I know that's, you know, I know that's a very lawyer way to answer that, but it's true. Rather than, in public, you know, in an open session, you know, talking about hypotheticals, I'd rather take time to look at that and talk about it.
I guess I'm just trying to say, like, some of it just seems a bit ridiculous. I mean, I can completely agree that if we, as a school board member, had a termination situation, I'm using examples here, obviously, coming before us, where, you know, the administration says we should terminate employee X as a teacher, and this person challenges that, that comes before the school board. One of us, as a school board member, is, you know, related to this person, of course, we would recuse ourselves from that, I understand that. But I'm saying something as simple as, general, across the board, 1% salary increase for all custodial people? My kid's working part-time in the custodial department, you expect me to not participate in that vote? That just seems ridiculous.
So, let's move away from the comp for a second, and look at, because the policy talks about any aspect of employment policies, which is much broader than just compensation. And that's one of the reasons that I recommended that if you decide to keep the nepotism policy, that, you know, you at least change that sentence or those two sentences at a minimum, because employment policies is so much broader than just compensation. I mean, you're talking about, you know, I'm trying to think of an example, you know, but just anything having to do with any condition, working condition or term of employment, which could be widely, widely broad in scope, and would really, you know, take your example to even further, and, you know, to a place where it just isn't realistic. And not only not realistic, but, again, if you tell somebody, an elected official, that they can't engage in talks about certain policies that might have some indirect impact, you know, on their spouse or family member, I do think that they might have an argument that you're, by excluding them through this policy, implementation of this policy, that you're infringing on their right to participate in something that the electorate has voted them in to participate on. And that's where the concern really is. So, compensation, you know, generally, compensation benefits, yes, generally, you do want to recuse yourself from those types of things if it's going to have some significant benefit or impact to your spouse or family member. But I think, you know, for the purposes of this policy and the revisions that we've suggested, I think, you know, it's much, much broader than that.
We had a member of the community use an example of, if my daughter, my wife, whatever, is the band teacher at the high school, and as a board, we decide that we're going to remodel the band room this summer, that that would be a situation to recuse yourself. Now, according to this policy, that, I wouldn't think that that's an employment aspect of my wife's job, being the band director, but I guess that'd be another case-by-case thing that we'd have to call you. I mean, is there any financial impact on my wife by getting a new band room? I wouldn't think so, but...
Right, I agree, that'd probably be a stretch.
Working conditions, maybe, of a new band room is better now because I voted in favor of this remodel?
I think that'd be a stretch, I don't think this policy would prevent that.
I think we have so many facilities issues, that if we needed to update the band room, that would come with a whole bunch of other things.
Yeah, so I guess, what I'd say is that, we're not talking about any policy, but we are talking about any employment policy, which is still pretty broad.
Right, yeah. This policy doesn't talk about our own children, correct?
Correct.
So...
Well, unless it's, if you mean children attending school.
I'm talking about my... Good point, I'm talking about my children who are in the school district. Have you seen conflicts of interest? I mean, I'm going to admit something here, a couple of weeks ago, I voted in favor of an out-of-state field trip for a group of probably 80 color guard girls, and my daughter is a member of that color guard team. Now, should I have recused myself because she's a member of that team and they were just traveling down to Illinois for a day? There's no financial benefit to her to go to that, but there's, I would say, an educational team-building camaraderie-type piece, enrichment of her life, if you will, of me voting in favor of that. But should I have stepped out of the room on that one?
No, I don't see any conflict there. And, you know, to the board president's point, reading some of the statute and those excerpts, I mean, it's really focused on finances. Really, that's what it's focused on. And when we, yes, it's broader than just compensation, but there has to be some sort of substantial benefit there. And what they're talking about is financial.
Melanie?
I'm just going to make a comment for the Policy Committee, because this will obviously be coming back to you guys. I just wanted to express that I would be in favor of keeping some kind of a policy, because I feel like removing it and just defaulting to the handbook really takes it out of the board's eye. You know, like, we're not going to be notified of a handbook change, or, you know? So, whatever, you know, if something needs a slight adjustment or whatever, I would still be in favor of keeping a policy intact.
I think that's a great point. I haven't seen some of the drafts, I know I talked to Superintendent Wimmer and Lenny Hansen, that they're, it sounds like, going to propose maybe two separate policies. So, if you take a look at this policy now, everything under the number one really just deals with the school board. But everything underneath two, three, and four deals with employees of the district. And so, I assume that we're going to get a proposal to have a nepotism policy on school board, separate from, you know, two, three, and four. And we'll talk about that, but I don't want to see any nepotism going on, especially with our employees of the district. I mean, if you're the principal of a school, I think there's a major issue if your son or daughter is a teacher reporting to you in that building, or whatever. We rely on our administration and HR department to make sure that that doesn't happen. Whether we have a policy on that or not, it better not happen. Better be in our employee handbook, and a policy on it is fine. I do think we need to define some, you know, there's some notes in here about defining immediate family, things like that, that I think could be changed and cleaned up a little bit. But, you know, the school board piece up at the top, personally, I just think it's common sense. I mean, if we were buying a new Caterpillar bulldozer tonight, I, of course, would recuse myself from that. And if there was a situation of, I don't know, hiring my son or something, yeah. So, I guess, to me, having a policy is fine. I think it's common sense that you know when to recuse your, you know when it's wrong. The thought did cross my mind on the out-of-state field trip, but I didn't think it was a big deal. They were going on a field trip, you know, we approve those all the time, it's part of policy that you have to approve those, and, you know, whatever.
Correct, and we would have advised you.
And you would have advised me, yeah.
Because we know your situations and know all those things, and we would have advised you.
Because we know your situations and, and know all those things, and we would have advised you.
Nancy?
I guess not being a member of the policy committee, just voicing my opinion, I would agree with Melanie, I'd like to still see a policy. I would be interested in having the committee, they'll review the original documentation that you noted when you were speaking from 2017 about that original. Information from our past attorney and what they had suggested, because apparently, we must have not followed that directly as our, that attorney had suggested. So I'd like to see the difference between those suggestions back then versus your suggestions now, I'd like the committee to review that. But I agree, we need a policy, I would like to see school board information, as Joel suggested, split out from staff, because I think those are two very different situations. And then I'm assuming that once policy looks at that, that would come back to the board, obviously for the three readings, correct, as you draft a new policy?
Correct, or kind of given the discussion, the policy committee might ask, as they have done in the past, hey, this is ready for our next discussion. Are we on track to represent the board, that kind of thing? So it, it determines kind of how our policy committee goes, where we're at, and we, we might do it that way as well. So it, I think it really depends if we find something, and again, I think it helps to hear from each other. You know, I'm hearing and sensing, yep, mock up two different policies for the, the committee to review, and we'll go from there.
And as Mr. Agar noted, I would assume that most people have common sense, but we all know some don't. So I, I would think to assume that something is left to common sense is probably not true, so we probably do need a policy around that. You know, to, to clearly state what the intention should and should not be. So I'm certainly, you know, in favor for the policy to be strict enough. But one of the comments tonight that was made that we would have four people applying for a social studies job is kind of laughable if we know the current state of employment. So I think we'd be excited if one applied. So I, I think we need to be realistic and not be too restrictive, so that we can actually employ the best people possible. And if that happens to be someone's, somehow related to someone, I would hate to see them not get the job because of that, so.
And just a point of clarification on the legal guidance I referenced before. It's not that the guidance said that the board shouldn't pass that policy. The, it was simply raising the issue, you know, like we do in a lot of legal opinions. We'll say, well, here are your options, if you choose this one, just be aware that this is a potential. You know, and, and that's exactly what it did, and I'm happy to, to share more with the administration.
Is it a fair statement to say that we can't have a policy that is so restrictive? That an individual, a citizen of our community is, is not able to run for school board? I mean, that's kind of the comments that people talked about tonight and have emailed me, like, you know, this is. That, that individual has every single right as a, as a citizen of our community, who's not a felon and who's, you know, whatever. To run for school board. I mean, isn't that where a major part of the liability of this policy could come if it's, if it's too restrictive on what the individual. Rights are as a board member?
I'll say this, I'll say that the, the school board is not vested with the power to determine what the qualifications for a school board member are.
Other discussion points.
Again, as always, our committee does meet this Thursday, but it gives time for the team to process. If you have any individual feedback, those of you who are not on the committee, please just reach out, let me know. I can certainly reach out to legal counsel if we need additional information prior to then. But I would assume that we would be doing some discussion as a team, some, we have some, some drafts, some things that we've talked about with that language to present and work through. Maybe some work time for the committee. And then we might reengage legal counsel once we have some, some tighter pieces to do. So instead of legal counsel, again, attending, just for that discussion, I think we should do a little bit more legwork as a policy team. But again, all board members, feel free to reach out if you have additional feedback between now and then.
I'd want to give a shout out and thank you to Monty Schmiggy, who, he sent us some policy, I believe it was from Green Bay, and, and some very thoughtful. Kind of review and research on our policy and others, and if, if, he sent it to all of us. So if you haven't seen that email, that's a good read. And also, thank you very much for not just being here, but preparing to be here tonight to answer these questions, I appreciate it very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next discussion item, North Shore Athletic Conference with Whitefish Bay serving as fiscal agent. I believe Mr. Andy Sarnol is going to walk us through that. Good evening, Mr. Sarnol.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Earlier last week, Athletics presented some information. I'd like to be just full transparency, no concerns or anything like that, but found out that. The way that the, the finances for the North Shore Athletic Conference were just a little bit loose. There's an individual, a couple of people monitoring it. But a, a term that you guys should be familiar with, because we do it on rare occasion, is a 660301 agreement. So our boys and girls hockey teams are both cooperatives, we're the fiscal agent for one of them. Cedarburg is the fiscal agent for another one. Anytime the districts enter into a cooperative, it's governed by state statutes. And it's a, a recommendation or even a, an expectation that they will bring forward a resolution for the board to approve, saying. We allow for this to happen at all participating districts. And then as well, there's an accompanying agreement that typically goes with such, such activity. So the two attachments that I have in this are for Whitefish Bay to be the fiscal agent for the North Shore Athletic Conference. They'll be running everything through their books, and actually, like, when you, when we have our quarterly updates, Fund 99. So there's actually a designated fund, follows all the standards that school districts have at their, as their requirements. So for discussion only at this point, I apologize for the presumptuous piece, but I did already date, pending your approval. The approval of this would be brought forward at the next meeting, which is March 20th. But happy to have any questions or if there's any discussion on the topic.
What downside or risk is there to the district in executing this agreement?
Yeah, absolutely, no, there's no financial implications. Whitefish Bay has the ability to accomplish this task with their existing staff. It's literally just them onboarding the account, literally the bank account, and monitoring the activity through their financial software, so no downsides at all.
This isn't for a particular sport, this is for the entire conference money, is that what we're talking about?
Correct, yep.
So, I mean, give us ballpark figures, what are we talking about, how much money?
Oh, it's my understanding there's less than 40 transactions a year, a few thousand dollars.
Okay.
Other discussion? Other questions? Kurt?
Why is this coming up?
It's coming up because I think Ms. Felber, Molly Hengst, and the rest of their colleagues identified it as something that we should have just a little bit tighter. Made the recommendation to one of the business managers, and now we're, we're enacting it. Great question.
Other questions? If not, since this was a discussion item, we'll see this on the next agenda.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We're moving to budget assumptions for the 2324 school year.
I will stay part, I'm just going to make a slight adjustment here. This, I can't say that this is the first step of the budgeting process, we're already well underway. We're monitoring what's going on in Madison with the governor's budget. State Superintendent Underlee had already released her preliminary budget or what she was proposing. We're already looking at next year pretty heavily, that's a little bit more aggressive or a little bit earlier than we have in the past. Wanted to share some information, this is not the budget by any means. This is a projection of based on where we believe things are going to land uninterrupted, meaning there will be changes. And I think that's going to be the next several meetings as we get into spring. Where are we or how are we going to deliver a balanced budget? So wanted to give a little bit of the background information, some of the neat things that we're doing, because with the COVID dollars and all that. We've been able to enhance some programs for students, we've been able to address a lot of things. So just have some real initial, initial information, and then wanted to make sure that you knew that we would be coming forward on a regular basis with new information. So this is a budget projection, really what we're trying to do is make sure everybody's aware of the information. Understand that when we take a look at what's going on this year and what's changing to next year, what's changing with revenues? Increases and decreases, what do we anticipate possibly changing in expenditures? Again, increases and decreases, then to have a target to, to move forward. So just quick agenda, talk about our funding. Why are we, who are we? Little bit of the highlights and maybe even some of the challenges that we've been experiencing over the last couple of years. What's our projection, what are the next steps? Our funding, this link as well that I have in blue there, that's at Finance 101, or what we're calling the school finance in, school finance in Wisconsin. We've had no revenue limit increases the last couple of years. In general, and I'll show a really interesting graph a couple of slides from now, but that's compounded by our revenue limit increases when those are received. That they're not keeping up with inflation. We've got some history, this is the 30th year of revenue limits in Wisconsin. Back in 1993, they thought they were going to last five to seven years, that they'd have to revisit everything because school districts would begin to be, become bankrupt. And we've been able to make do, but I'm going to show that, that revenue is not kept up. We do need to be aware, and we've had this discussion at this venue in the past, those ESSR funds are one-time dollars, currently using $6.1 million. We still have just under a million for next year, but that causes a shortfall, it's an inherent deficit that we need to address. We're being responsive to students' needs, even though we're doing what the legislature told us to do, is live on those, balance your budget with that. Great transition here, because this is where we've been able to address some of the needs, some, they are additional expenses, but some of the additional needs. There's academic supports, not to mention some expanded support, some of those areas that are not direct instruction, but some of this other side areas to support students. Get that learning back on track, be able to support our, support indirectly our classrooms and our schools. Our programs and services, I'd like to mention that we've been able to maintain class sizes. And not only that, but we've been able to maintain, or for that matter, increase our programs and our staffing. Two pretty important parts. Compensation, we need to recruit, we need to retain, we've talked about that at just about every meeting, very important. We need to model changes to create additional opportunities for support staff, we need to make sure that we're growing them. We're a medium-sized district, we have that ability to do some internal important pieces with our support groups. Our substitute costs are increasing. We, we continue to have, and it's a little bit better than last year, but we continue to have staff absences, we need to monitor that. As well, we're taking a look at some of our curriculum areas and a lot, a lot of cyclical type things that are overdue, and we're making sure that we're monitoring that. The whole duration, for the last three years, we've been also supporting our custodial supplies, services, making sure that we're keeping our areas clean. Making sure that our staff can get to school, that they're not out sick when possible, that students can be at school and learn. But that's been another expenditure that we've had over the last couple of years. This is in general, I want, I want to share, this is not us, that's the next slide that I actually accidentally just scrolled to. This is just a state average, the blue line is a linear CPI increase representing a revenue. Indexed to CPI, again, just a linear. The orange line, and you'll see this, the orange line is the actual revenue limits in, over the period of time since 2008, 2009. In that period of time, 15 years, on average across the state, there's a $3,100 revenue limit gap. This is just revenues, not just revenue limit, but a revenue gap. What does it mean for us? This is, this is actually West Bend. The blue bars are the revenue limit increases that were a part of the state biennial budget, again, going back 15 years. And the orange line is the cumulative CPI Consumer Price Index during the same period of time. And when you add up all the blue lines at $1,182. And the gap of the CPI growth of $3,673, there's a difference of just under $2,500. When you multiply that by the 6,000 students, we're looking at a gap over this 15-year period. And this is, this is ongoing, in prior years, it was less, and yes, we've seen an increased CPI Consumer Price Index the last couple of years. But this is each and every year, it's not one-time money. For the current year that we're in right now, if the revenue limits would have kept up with CPI. We would have had an additional $15 million of access to dollars. Doesn't talk about the funding source, it was, would have just been built into the revenue limit. It's a large dollar amount. 17.2% of our budget, when I take our general fund or special education fund, it's 17% of the budget.
The 14 million you're referencing, that's over the 15 years?
No, that's one year, that's just this year. And if you, I'm, I'll ballpark it, if you go back one year, 11 million, you go back one more year, nine. So that, and I can get those dollar amounts, but this is just this year, our revenue limit would have been 12, 15 million dollars more than what it currently is.
So once again, because I only have five times left, I'm going to say it. Again, this is a statewide problem, this is not just plaguing West Bend. And we can argue that we're a low-spending district, and we can all say that's great, which I agree, I like my taxes low. But this is a statewide problem that needs to be addressed at Madison. The revenue limits are basically going to bankrupt school districts. Correct me if I'm wrong, because that's what's going to happen. So all of your legislators who are sitting at home watching tonight on TV, I hope you're listening. Because we have a job to provide public education to all students, regardless of age, race, nationality, creed, whatever you want to continue to say, that is our job. And we are unable to do it because we cannot go above the revenue limit. We are going to bankrupt our district as well as others, unless somebody in Madison does something soon. And we can sit here and we can talk about it, and we can all discuss how we need to cut this and do that, and we should have done this. It doesn't matter, our hands are tied by state legislators at this point, who refuse to address this problem on an annual basis for the last, how many years?
15.
Longer than that, 90, when, when was it enacted, 94, what did you say?
The 30th year, 1993.
So for 30 years, they have said, too bad, we're going to do nothing for you, school districts. So, I mean, there's where the problem lies.
Thank you. Any other questions on this slide?
Those, years with the asterisks are years where. Revenue grew in a budget, or?
I'll, I'll include that in a weekly update. I'll, I'll, I'll think about it and I'll skip back, and I think, yeah, I'll, I'll get back to you on that, thank you.
You're looking for the footnotes.
I was looking for the footnote.
I don't, I don't want to guess, I don't want to guess, so I will, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't want to guess, I will get back to you. Our, our enrollment, and, and we all know this, and I, I need to make sure the community knows this, we're a wonderful community of baby boomers, of empty nesters. And until something changes with that, and we do have some growth in some areas, but this is our current enrollment. These are literally students in our seats right now, not the membership which drives the money, but this is students in our seats. So it's our students being educated, and it's open enrollment in by grade level. Back in 1314, we were just under 7,000 students, 6,875, and that's, that's heads, not, not FTE. Currently, we're at 5,700 students. We're graduating 500-plus students, we're getting in 375 as kindergartners. But by 202829, we received our UW Applied Population Lab study here in September, October. But they're showing that here within the next five to seven years, we're going to be under 5,000 students. Sectional that I went to down in Milwaukee here a few weeks ago at the joint conference, school boards, superintendents, business managers, human, human resources. We, we can right-size the district, we, we can and we do. That, that's a part of the budget that's right off the top, we have the ability to do that. But what we can't do is still think that we're a large district when we're growing, or when, when we're, when we're contracting in size. There's efficiencies there that we need to be able to garner, it makes it more difficult. There, there's a sectional that I went to on that, and it was, it was enlightening, I hadn't thought of that before. But you will see, and I think Mr. Hansen, as he's up on the next agenda item, he's going to cast this one forward for the staffing, and that's that right sizing that we do on an annual basis. We make sure we monitor class sizes and all the other areas, but that's going to be rolling forward, which by the time we're done in, in about seven years, will be under 5,000 students.
And I think the important piece of that visual is showing where we are with that bubble and that projection. So we're, we're marked, you know, now we finally are clearing elementary to have stabilized, this is what future enrollment will look like. But there's still this larger bubble of kids, they're still coming through those upper grades, still in those buildings. And again, we're forecasting these projections so that when we right-size this district, we have the models in front of us and can look for those efficiencies, short and long term.
The Wisconsin Applied Population Lab Study, as it relates to these, these projections, I'm assuming this isn't unique to West Bend, I think we've talked about that before. It's a general population trend.
Correct, 75% of school districts in Wisconsin are declining enrollment, those that are, there are some that are stable, but otherwise, there are some that are growing rapidly. Sun Prairie, over up in the northwestern corner of the state, kind of almost one of the suburbs of Minneapolis. So there are areas that are growing, but 75% are declining enrollment. Need to talk about some special things that we get to do. So student opportunities, we, again, we've maintained, we've. So student opportunities, we, again, we've maintained, we've expanded some of that. We've created offerings to them. We still have a double A negative rating with S and P. That was a part of the refinancing that we had, not this past summer, but the summer before. We've been able to defuse the debt. We've been, been able to refinance. We're a double A negative, it's in the top tier. So we're, we're still a solid district. That's not, not just the finances of our district. It's also the city and the other municipalities in Jackson. It's us as a whole and what our economy looks like, but we're still strong. We need to, we need to celebrate that. And we've talked about that in the past. We have been able to defuse the debt, which is meaning levying those dollars, paying those off in an interest-bearing account until we have the ability to pay that debt. We've been able to refinance and garner those opportunities. Again, we've celebrated that in the past. We need to remember it, even though it wasn't too long ago. We're done levying for debt. That was a part of this last pending interest rates and things like that. But we're done levying for our existing debt. Our staffing, we're regionally competitive compensation-wise. We are higher than average retention rates for full, full-time employees. Again, Mr. Hanson, I know he has a lot of information about that. Benefits. We're self-funded for both health insurance as well as dental. That has been performing well. It's no changing. I'll talk about that with one of the challenges on the next slide. But it had been performing well and it allowed us over the last several years to be able to plan, plan ahead in the future, put some dollars in accounts that we may need to talk about, utilize some of those fund balances that we've built up. So we need to talk about that a little bit. Our clinic right now, our offsite clinic is doing wonderful. It's, it's, it's a, it's a cost savings measure. It's accessible. It's, it's, it's a great offering that we have to our, not, not just our covered staff, but other, just about all staff. Some challenges that we have. Those opportunities that we just talked about that we have been able to maintain over the last couple of years, we need to make sure that we're, we're addressing that moving forward. Being able to do that with the revenue limit constraints, a lot of the uncertainty that we have in the budget, that we don't know what the next state biennial budget is going to look like. We need to, we need to monitor that. We have a lot of facilities needs. We've talked about that. I think we've had some special sessions that, that's not going away. Our operational funds, again, as we took a look at that graph, we're, we're reducing every year because our revenues are not keeping up with expenditures. So it's a diminishing return on those access to dollars that we have. As I just mentioned, this next biennial budget is probably going to be one of the toughest ones to go through. I don't know what the timing is going to be. That's just more uncertainty, but we need to just stay on top of it. We need to make sure that we have options, that we have, are looking at different scenarios. Did that a couple of years ago with two different scenarios. I think it was two years ago, right now, we were looking at two different scenarios. But we, we may need to look at three or more, but we need to make sure that we stay on top of that. Staffing, we've talked about this as well, scarce supply. Those enrolled in the teacher, the teacher certification programs, their four-year schools are going down that are enrolled. We need to make sure we monitor that. Not only just teachers, but we have other areas that we're finding difficulty with in, in retaining those hourly people. Health insurance right now, six months in for this current fiscal year, it's trending at 13% above what we projected to be. We need to monitor that because 13% is a large dollar amount, especially moving forward. That's projected to continue through 2024 and beyond. Need to make sure that we're monitoring that, building that into the scenarios so we can plan for it. As I'd mentioned, just a typical year versus next year. So the last several years, you saw we're graduating 500 seniors. We're enrolling 360 kindergartners. That's been typical the last several years and it will be true next year. Our revenue limit had been increasing by one to 2% over the last several years. We don't know what that's going to be right now. We need to be conservative on that. That needs to be a part of some of the different scenarios that we utilize. But we need to be conservative. We need to make sure that we're monitoring that. Costs have been going up and this is true of busing contracts. This is true of services. This is true of supplies, equipment, technology, one to 4%. That was pretty typical. We're seeing now anywhere from 5 to 20%. Bids that Mr. Harder will secure are good for five days. We need to act on things quickly because there's price adjustments that quick. Projected shortfall in a normal year, and this is what we've been addressing for a number of years now, is $2 to $3 million. Number one, because revenues haven't kept up with inflation. And number two, because of our declining enrollment. But what's been typical is $2 to $3 million per year. That's going to be true for next year. And we're using those one-time COVID dollars, that $6.1 million to balance the budget, that's going away with only a million dollars left to replace that. We need to monitor that. Still planning a balanced budget, but that's why we need to meet over the next several meetings to keep going with some of the momentum and some of the decisions that we need to explore and bring forward for discussion and action. The last couple of years, we've had a 0% increase in state funding. And not, not even just state funding, excuse me, in the revenue limit. So that's, that's a few years now. That revenue limit decrease basically because of enrollment is 3.64% or $3.2 million projected for next year. We're using the $6.1 million of S R 2 and S R 3. We know that expenses are going up. We're monitoring that closely. We know what the Consumer Price Index is going to be for negotiations. But we need to monitor all of that. We need to make sure that we're, we're looking at student performance, our continuous improvement plan as a district, how we're able to address things and, and do our jobs. I'm projecting right now, and this is a projected shortfall. This is not a budget, right off the bat, a projected shortfall of approximately $8 million. So what are some of the next steps? What are we looking at? So we need to deliver a balanced budget. We need to minimize the impact to students. We need to make sure that we're, we're still serving them. That $8 million is a starting point. We're going to go from there and start making decisions, bring things forward, considerations, impact on decisions. We need to make sure that we're continually taking a look at where, where the state is, what, what the legislators are doing, staying connected with those groups. We need to explore options for reductions, number one. And then the second thing, where I'd mentioned that health had been performing, our costs, we had been underspending. We'd been able to put dollars and fund balance in different areas. We do need to consider still being able to deliver a balanced budget. Can we utilize some of those fund balances? Differ or slide over some expenditures to be able to deliver that balanced budget.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Sarno?
Do you remember when the biennial budget was finally set in stone two years ago, four years ago? The governor just put out his budget. The Republican legislature said, we're probably going to start from scratch. It's going to take time, obviously. Do you remember as it, was it July, August?
It wasn't as late as that. I'd want to say it was May, June. And again, I can look that up and confirm with you.
I can look that up too, just curious.
It, it wasn't, it wasn't outstandingly late. There have been a couple of those in my career and they're, they're nail biters. Because boy, the further you get into the summer and the start of school is approaching, that, that can make an impact.
I think that's why Andy talks about this isn't our budget. This is where we're projecting because of the level of uncertainty, because we don't want to get ahead of ourselves and all of a sudden have to start cutting. We have to prepare for that case scenario and, and start going from there. And as you said, the next couple of conversations around unpacking one part of it, figuring out, you know, what to do in the next year, future years, to make sure that we're, we continue to be financially sound. There were a lot of celebrations, like you said, we're a financially sound community as, as well as school district, and we want to maintain that.
Kurt?
Yeah, I just have two comments, kind of questions too, for you to comment on. This is my opinion. We have a great public school district in West Bend. We also have a great private school system in West Bend, K, K through eight. I do want to make note on how much money the taxpayer funds the private schools today compared to 20 years ago. And I'm in favor, again, I just want to point out, that's a win for us to have funding go to help our private schools to offer a good education. But I think it's a neighborhood of two to three million now, where 20 years ago it was zero.
Correct.
So I just
Those are all levy dollars. Those are not funded by the state. Those are all local, local levy dollars that
So again, I just want the taxpayer, the duty full, we're talking like 14 million shortfall here, here. I just want to point out that we do fund that and we're proud of it. The other point, didn't the governor just propose $1,000 per school pupil increase in the revenue limits? 650 and 350, was it? So what would that mean to chopping into the $14 million kind of shortfall in the CPI from our per pupil increase?
Let me, let me go up to that because I want to make sure that we're talking the same dollars. And so this, the projected $8 million shortfall. So not to, not to confuse the 14, 15 million dollar gap that if, that if revenues would have kept, kept up over the last 15 years, $8 million shortfall, declining enrollment. It helps us in the sense that we get to maintain those dollars for one extra year. We have two exemptions and they equal about $1.5 million each. So that's that $3.2 million that I have on this slide. When we receive an increase in the revenue limit, it really helps us two years and beyond. But the next year, just as an example, I, I, state superintendent Underly had the $350 revenue limit increase in year one and 650 in year two, and that stacks. So it totals $1,000 between the two years. But of that $350 increase in year one, you think, oh, multiply 350, multiply by your 6,000 students. It's a couple of million dollars, right? Because of a declining enrollment exemption, it equals $185,000 of new money for us. It really helps out in future years because that then gets brought into the mix for moving forward. But it minimally helps us next year. So we, like, that, that's something that we need to monitor. Because one of the other scenarios that we've started developing is we also receive a $742 categorical aid per student. Again, we get to multiply that by 6,000 students. And originally here, a couple of months ago, we thought that, that $742, because the Republican legislature wanted to make sure that they're monitoring property taxes and make sure that they weren't adversely impacting that, the cost of property taxes. We thought that they're originally going to start building that up again. Because that had been happening like, boy, 2015 to 18. That's what was growing when you saw some of the revenue limit increases in earlier years. That we do get dollar for dollar. So $200 of new money, that translates to $1.2 million. So Governor Evers, he, he did have a provision in there though, that there's a low-spending threshold. We're considered a low-spending district. A couple of times in recent years, we've actually been picked up by just a little bit more than what the average school district gets. He did increase that by another $100 each of the two years. So there's a little portion there additionally that we'd get to do. But that's his budget. That's my soapbox for the night. I'm a little bit cautious in just saying, let's move forward with that as our one option. I don't think it's going to happen. I think they'll, they'll, they'll be somewhere in the mix. Maybe it's going to be a combination of the two. I do know that people are conscious about property taxes across the state. So we need to monitor how that's going to be. It's, it's going to start rolling out here and there's going to be a lot of communication in the next month or two. I hope that explained.
Yeah, just my final comment is agreeing with Nancy. I mean, our state legislators have to do something here. Take up the problem and address it. You can't go 30 years and not even talk about it. So I, I would encourage our state legislature, I'm going to be reaching out to them as well. So, so hopefully they're listening and seeing your professional presentation here on how it affects and what our shortcut is if they don't do anything.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there no action on this? This is information that's just kind of on the journey here. So we'll, we'll hear more in future, at future meetings.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next on our agenda is preliminary 2022, 2023 staffing plan priorities. And Mr. Hanson will walk us through that. Good evening.
Good evening. So we are talking about 2023, 2024. I know it's only February, but we're already talking about 2024. This is a pretty typical process for us where we talk about where the budget is heading, but it, no matter what, we need to put together a staffing plan to make sure we meet our students' needs for the coming year. So what we start doing is the first of many different meetings that will take place with the board, where we lay out some general priorities around the staffing plan, collect feedback around where we want to go with the staffing plan. And then that will lead us into presentation of an actual proposed staffing plan for discussion and then for approval with the board. So a number of steps that take place, but it's important to start talking about it early, which is what we're here to do today. So a lot of what you'll see today is similar to what we've presented in multiple prior years. Because we're a school district, we're here for students, we're here for student learning. A lot of our priorities don't change from year to year. However, our strategies for getting after those priorities do evolve so that we can use our resources as most efficiently as possible. The primary three decision drivers are our student needs, our enrollment, and then what the budget allows. When we talk about student needs, we kind of break it into three primary areas. We've got, first of all, academic support. That can present itself in a lot of different ways. But when we're talking about staffing, we want to think about the different types of staffing resources that provide academic support. We think about teachers, which is part of our certified staff group. Certified staff includes far more than just teachers. It includes all of our counselors, psychologists, interventionists, special education staff that are certified. We have our support staff, which is where we'll get into both instructional support staff, such as paraprofessionals, special education, as well as general paraprofessionals, instructional techs, those types of roles. And then we have our non-instructional support staff, which play an important role as well in terms of, there's a wide range of those positions, but they can range anywhere from your school administrative assistants that you see when you walk into your child's school, all the way to our technicians who are making the technology in this room work at this very moment. You'll also think about those district-wide resources. So we think a lot about who are the staff at the schools? And the school staff does make up the vast, vast majority of the staff that we have. But you're also going to think about what are those resources in terms of curricular support, in terms of coaching support and such that take place throughout the district. Then you can, will, the second big group we look at is those student services supports. What are all those other pieces that play an important role in helping our students be ready to learn so they can absorb all the great information that is brought to them through those academic support staffs? And then we talk about having that good, equal access to education. We, we, like all school districts, provide education to every child that walks through our door, no matter what their needs. So how do we ensure that there is equitable access to that education for every student? So do a brief review of some of the strategic staffing actions that took place this year so that we could meet the prior year's targets. So in terms of academic support, we've highlighted some of those supports right here. One of the things you'll hear us talk about time and time again is the pride that we take as a district. I know you do as a board, we as an administration and our staff in maintaining the widest swath of opportunities and programs for students that you're going to find anywhere around here. And once again, in spite of the budgetary realities that Mr. Sarno just talked about, we have maintained those and in many cases expanded them. Once again, we've increased reading support, which is a multi-year trend that we've been allocating staff for. We've continued to have a full math interventionist at every kindergarten through eighth grade school, which was something that was a strategic addition a few years ago and been able to maintain that. We were actually, we were able to reorganize our academic and career planning staff to actually reduce costs, but probably, probably reduce costs, but get more bang for our buck and get a really outstanding individual who oversees that program at the high school. We continued with a number of other supports, such as success coaches at Badger and the Academic Support Center, which are, those are support staff positions that really support our students with some early intervention supports when they may have some early signs of struggle or needs of some extra help and being able to coordinate that for them. And all of this is taking place while we've preserved the historical class sizes that we have had in the district for some time. From a student services standpoint, we've been able to increase FTE for our family liaison positions, helping students and families have the resources that they need so that students are ready to learn. We've expanded our behavioral coaching model. We've also really looked at our English language learner supports as that's a population that rises in our district and thinking about how do we ensure that every child that comes through our door has access to the supports that they need. And then we've also, to Mr. Rebholz's point, continued to provide great partnership supports at our parochial sites as well, where we continue to expand the special education evaluation as well as actual special education direct services that we provide at those parochial partner schools that we are so proud to work with. We've also been able to maintain our recent FTE increases in the area around school psychologists. We've also been able to maintain our recent FTE increases in the area around school psychologists, special education teachers, and special education aides. Around meeting each child's unique needs, our alternative program supports have seen an increase in both certified and support staff. We have been able to continue to grow the virtual program, which is a winner for everybody involved. The, the virtual program ensures that our students from our area who are interested in that delivery model are able to receive that here in West Bend, but also when there are connections to some of the resources provided at the site, like counselors and things like that, we can provide those resources in tandem with our outstanding virtual program. We've continued that and then expanded tutoring support as well. What does that look like in practice? People ask a lot about class sizes. This is our most recent, as far as I believe just two weeks ago enrollment, what the class sizes looked like. So they've maintained that historical trend that we've seen in class sizes K through six. We haven't seen a big change in seven through 12, but more so it's a lot easier to provide simple numbers for K through six in them because of the way they're organized into simple sections and houses and so forth. But we've been able to maintain those historical class sizes K through 12. So that takes us to what, what we're really here to think about, which is where are our priorities for next year? So a couple of those pieces that we talked about before, one was budget and the other is enrollment. Mr. Sarno spent more time than I will on those factors. I'm not going to be redundant, but again, prior state budgets have, the revenues have been flat and we want to ensure that we're conservatively budgeting so that we prepare a plan that's deliverable regardless of what the state might deliver in terms of a budget. We already discussed just a moment ago around the uncertainties around that budget, but we are all fully aware of the impact that inflation has, certainly in our own homes, but also for our staff and the district, just as the individuals in their own homes are buying materials and cleaning supplies, food, things like that, the cost of those supplies and for the school district has risen as well and something that impacts our budget for, for sure. And as Mr. Sarno discussed, federal support that was put in place a few years ago will be ending. Enrollment plays a huge factor in the staffing plan. It's critical for us to adjust our staff size and scope to match where our enrollment trends are going. So you saw this graph just slightly different a moment ago. What Mr. Sarno showed you was this graph for the current year. Where is our enrollment now? What we've done now is taken the enrollment and projected it one year forward. So you start, you continue to see that flattening trend, which is kind of remarkably consistent across first through seventh grade here on this chart. You're seeing that now Silverbrook has hit kind of that, that floor in terms of our decline in enrollment trend, and we would project that the future declines in enrollment as a district are really just that trend matriculating through the second half of Badger in eighth grade and then through the high school. It's obviously critical that we adjust our staffing to meet the enrollment needs or we will create a budgetary challenge. And, and that is, you know, one of the biggest jobs that we have when we get into the staffing plan. So what are the implications of, of the enrollment shift? Well, we'll have fewer sections across the district, but we will maintain those class sizes once again. We do project to have some position reductions, but as always, attrition is our preferred method of accomplishing those, whether that's one-year contracted staff that maybe are offered a returning contract because they've, they've only accepted a one-year contract, retirements as well as resignations. We do have a reduction in force policy that we will use if necessary in order to accomplish reductions. Right now, we are extremely optimistic though, that the, that any reductions we're going to need to accomplish and are going to be accomplished through attrition. We've seen a decent number of retirements as well as retirements across a wide swath of different content areas. So we're pretty confident right now that attrition is going to accomplish any reductions that are going to be necessary to adjust to enrollment. So as we start to think about some of the priorities that come forward as we develop that staffing plan, some of them look similar to past years. We put in place some things in past years that we found great success with, and if it's worked, let's keep doing it. And then we've also discussed ways that we can provide additional supports for students. So in terms of academic support, what does that look like? Well, once again, first point as always, how do we sustain all of those myriad of programs and opportunities for students? Priority one for sure. Reading and math intervention at every school, which have been expanded in recent years, we want to continue to be able to deliver just as much service as we have been, continue to be able to provide that virtual program, which both from a student standpoint in terms of them receiving their instruction and the method that works best for them, but also from a financial standpoint, as this keeps students in our district rather than leaving for an open enrolled outside virtual program, it's a winner both ways and we want to make sure we continue to support that. We want to continue our embedded instructional coaching model at each school, which we've seen outstanding success with, and preserve our existing academic support positions so that students have all those additional supports when they encounter challenges and struggles along the way. Absolutely.
What is the embedded instructional coaching model?
Absolutely. So we have instructional coaching for teachers provided all the way from pre-K through the high school. It looks and different and evolves as, as we go up through the grade levels. We have some really skilled, for example, reading interventionists at our elementary school who are extremely talented, not only at working with students in reading intervention, but their knowledge around reading instruction as well as other just best practices in terms of instruction, who provide coaching at those sites. As we go up in other levels, you'll see more specialized support. So at the high school, we have an outstanding team of both a literacy and math instructional coach who have a ton of experience that they bring and provide supports for our teachers.
That's good. I just needed a different wording. Thank you.
No problem. Additional priorities. So in terms of student services, we've already highlighted some of the positions that were brought on board over the past few years that have provided that wraparound support for students, that they're fully ready to learn and able to learn and have the support they need when challenges arise. We have these outstanding teams of counselors, psychologists, and family liaisons at every site, even at elementary, having one of each of those positions, which has provided a outstanding wraparound team to, to both families and students so that students, when they come in the door, have everything they need so that they can learn. And then some of those additional behavioral supports, whether it's been behavioral coaching for staff or other support positions, like some of the ones we talked about earlier, such as our Academic Success Center at the high school. As we look then at the, the kind of the third leg of that stool, the equal access, we want to continue to adjust our special education staffing needs to, to what the needs of our students are, what the staff we provide to what those, those needs are. Mrs. Melstrand from the Student Services Department has been an outstanding partner in helping us really match what are those specific needs by building and what types of teacher supports and support staff needs are there that are going to help us match those as perfectly as possible. And we've really been able to have some outstanding results by, by partnering together on that. Mentioned earlier, English language learners, that is an increasing population in our district, and we need to make sure that our support is responsive both to not just the number of students that come in, as well as the variety of different language backgrounds that come in and the variety of language proficiencies that come in. There's a lot of adjusting there that's needed. And Mrs. Melstrand's team there as well has been an outstanding partner in digging in and finding out how do we best support those student needs. And then what we will continue to do, and with the partnership with the curriculum instruction department at Dr. Reese, is really looking at the Title I supports. We have certain schools that are identified as Title I in that they receive, we, we receive as a district some additional resources and really how do we target that to, to pour those resources in where they're most needed? Often that looks like additional reading or math support, but it can look like a number of other things as well.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
So with the decrease in, in our student population year by year, why are we increasing so much? You know, what are the increases in additional behavior support, counselors, psychologists, stuff like that? And why do we need to keep adding when we're reducing?
So what I'll go back to is some of these were addition, but a lot of them were maintain. So for example, maintaining psychologist counselor liaison positions at each site. Now, the, the number certainly is going to be dependent on what the number of total students are, but those, for example, and we're using one example, those positions bring three very different skill sets to the school that they can tap into.
But I'll be behavioral based.
Pardon?
But mostly all behavioral based, correct?
Oh, no. No.
I mean, one of them is literally behavioral support.
You're looking at which one? I mean, I'm just talking about those three positions. So you're talking, you're going back to, if you can help me find which slide you're focusing on.
Fifteen out of sixteen.
Is this one the additional behavioral supports?
Yes.
So for example, we have a behavioral coaching model where we have a coach as well as an individual that supports at the site level when we have needs that, that require some additional intervention and support, both with the student as well as equipping the teaching staff be prepared to intervene as best possible. That's one way that we intervene there. So in terms of, when it says additional behavioral supports, maybe what I mean is just maintaining the behavioral supports that we've developed over the last few years to meet some of those needs.
So we haven't added extras?
There's no proposal here, I mean, this isn't really a proposal, but no proposal for added, more staff behavioral support next year. That's not what's on the table for us in our projected proposal, which again, this isn't a proposal. It's more thinking about our, how are we going to maintain some of the ways that we have enhanced our ability to meet those needs over the past few years? So good clarification, absolutely, but no, I would not project that the proposal that you'll see come forward in the coming weeks would show any increase there. Good question. So, and that took me to next steps in discussion and so forth.
All right, questions, Nancy?
So a couple of things. One of the things I'm wondering that we could review, and maybe this is not for, maybe this would be something that would be considered a closed session, but I guess I'd like to see some type of information provided to the board on some cost efficiencies if we were not a self-funded healthcare district.
Okay.
And then perhaps on the counter, you know, what are the benefits, the pros and the cons to being self-funded versus, I don't know what the other plan would be called, but whatever.
Called fully funded.
Fully funded, whatever. So if you could provide that to us. I'm also very interested, and I think this is critical for this year, but for future reference, I'm interested in the overall decline of people going into the teaching career field. So I'd really like to see a five-year graph that shows us, you know, five years ago, we had, I have no idea, you know, 20,000 students going into teaching. You know, this year we're projected with, you know, five. I don't know what that number is. And then I'd also like to see if there's any projections, because I would assume some of the universities would have some type of trending projections that would show us. You know, right now, much like what Mr. Sarno was showing us, the gap that we currently have in CPI funding information, I think you're going to have the same kind of gaps in teaching in the next couple of years. And I'd like to see what that is looking like or what the projections are looking like. And then I guess the last one's more of just a general statement. You know, as we continue to look at right sizing, or as you continue to look at right size in the district, being the other board members, it's going to take, you know, one to two years, I would guess, maybe Superintendent would tell me I'm wrong, but before we can get to that plan or get that plan finalized and make some decisions. But you have an immediate problem with an eight million dollar gap for next year. So I say to my fellow board members who will be continuing on the board, you really need to put your heads to the grindstone and try and figure out how you're going to help them solve this problem because this is not a small problem and it's not going away. So you've got a major problem and you have students who are coming in who have more needs than I would assume we've ever seen before in both, you know, mental as well as some physical challenges and then some special ed challenges. And those aren't going away and we have to provide those services legally, unlike our friends at the private schools who can turn those students away. We can't do that here. So we need to figure out how we're going to fund all of those. This is me once again, Nancy 2.0, using my opportunity here. This isn't me saying that anyone in this district has not done a fair job. I'm just pointing out that you have serious, serious issues that are facing this district, that are facing all districts. But if you don't get a handle on the other things and, and take a real hard look at, how can we cut costs but provide the same services? Probably impossible. And the legitimate concern that we aren't going to have enough people applying for teaching jobs in the next couple of years. And how are we going to solve that? And what are some solutions that, you know, we might be able to do or what are some efficiencies that we can gain? Because as I won't be sitting here, I'll still be paying taxes and still be concerned about the students in this district. So thank you.
So your, your questions around availability of the workforce are very timely, both short-term and long-term. DPI each year puts out a pretty extensive report around number of licensed teachers, number of people leaving the workforce, how long people, how long do teachers tend to last in the workforce? And that report actually just came out a couple of weeks ago for the, the current year. You know, we, we can share that information, absolutely. It's important information for not just, as you said, the board, but the entire community to hear. And one of the, one of the sneak peek previews I'll give you is you see certainly people continuing to be licensed, the number is declining, but the number of emergency license, the number of kind of one-year licenses, kind of those stopgap licenses has significantly increased because districts are being creative, right? Like you said, we are here to provide that service no matter what, but the number of alternative licensure pathways has exploded in order to try and meet that need.
And I would challenge you to say that if I received an emergency license, another important piece of information for the public and for the board would be, is that, was that a one-year thing? Did I stick with it? Or did I leave the profession afterwards? Because I would guess that there will be some who say, that is not what I signed up for at all. Thank you very much.
And they collect that data and they have some outstanding graphs to share around kind of the longevity of new teachers today.
We'll, we'll get you that information because in that report, that was two pieces that kind of stuck out when they talk about that diminishing pipeline. They also speak about graduates who graduate with that but fail to pursue the license. They don't file and get the license, so they're off put almost immediately before they even start. And then in that one, two, three-year range where their entry and exit is so brief, that was a considerable increase. And then as we've talked about before, for the first time, when we're starting to see we're losing people to another industry versus a competitor in education.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. Thank you for the presentation. Obviously, we'll hear more at upcoming meetings. We move now to reports and the superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer.
Sure. A couple of things to highlight. You might start seeing posters such as this all around the bend. It's a business showcase. It's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. Our downtown's going to be facing some significant remodeling, could impact traffic, things of that nature. We are giving our field house to those local businesses to do a showcase, maybe get people to not worry about parking, come out and visit those businesses and create some exposure for them. So happy to host that space. And again, that's through the, the chamber. When you think about connections at every board member's spot and a couple there, and we'll make sure we get this out, businesses, if you're a business person in West Bend or the greater area, you would have received probably an electronic version of how to partner with the school district and the different ways. Again, whether it's just a guest speaker, guest reader, whether it's you're hosting youth apprenticeship students, how to do that and how to get engaged centrally with us. And then, so just reach out to the school district, but it gives people an idea because they might not know, they might not know who to contact, how to get involved. And again, even if it's you're just coming to a career fair, let us know. There is an upcoming college and career fair, I believe March 15th, if anyone out there is interested and they haven't had a spot yet. We, we work collaboratively with all Washington County districts to all visit at Fair Park and see that. So reach out to us as well if you're interested in those pieces. So a lot of neat opportunities for us to host the community and the community to partner with us too. So board members, you've got a pile of those as you engage with communities, businesses, et cetera. Feel free to hand out or direct them to us. One of the other pieces, you know, we talk a lot about things that, opportunities we provide. I was, had the pleasure of opening the all-district orchestra concert. I know I saw John there as a parent too, that we have comprehensive orchestra, fifth through 12th grade, and it's amazing to hear where they start and where they end up in their high school years. And it's amazing for kids to have an aspiration and it's fun for those big kids to kind of look back and, and know where they started. They might lose sight of that. So, so that's, that was a great opportunity as well as the musical performance. I'm sure when our student reporters come, they'll highlight those. But when you saw the dance teams tonight and we were recognizing their selection for state. teams tonight, and we were recognizing their selection for state, that understanding that there's 421 school districts in the state, and what that means to be selected to represent your schools and your community is nothing short of amazing. So thank you to those students. We also had a pretty stellar weekend, and I'll just highlight wrestlers from both of our schools are qualifying for state. That's coming up this weekend. We have four wrestlers from West, one wrestler from East, all qualifying. They'll go on to Madison this weekend. So we've got Casey Gish from East. He was first place at sectionals. Ethan Bass from West, again, first place at sectionals. Ben Bast, first place at sectionals. Connor Mira Sola, also, both of those are from West. Connor and his brother Cole, both taking first again at sectionals. So, pretty amazing accomplishment. They're taking first in their sectional and going on to represent several of them, one state last year. So we look forward to their performance. Dive state champion was held this weekend, dive and swim. East senior Ryan Meyer finished fifth at state diving. We also had swimmers who qualified in four individual events, two relays. So remember, this is a co-op team. It's East and West together. Some of our co-ops are not only us, but there are other county schools. This is just an east-west co-op. So Ryan Meyer finished fifth in diving, as noted, but other results, Dawson Walter, seventh in the 500 freestyle, 14th in the 200 freestyle. Drew Gundrum, 21st at the 100 backstroke. Weston Keppert, 23rd at the 500 freestyle. Again, Will Tibbets, Walters, Quentin Wilmes, Wesley, Alithi, 15th for the 200 freestyle relay. Walters, Tibbets, Gundrum, and Alithi, 17th at the 400 freestyle relay. So, again, might not have been on the podium, but there's 421 whole districts competing. So just congratulations. Thank you to those athletes for representing us. Along with our snowboard, both boys and girls placed third at state in the championships. Top finishes include border cross, Johnny Mandel, who had a fifth-place finish, the giant slalom, again, Johnny Mandel was fifth, Gavin Chabelt, 10th, Brianna Chabelt, 7th in slalom, Johnny Mandel in 6th, and both girls and boys downhill skiing is still going on today. So thankful that we had a little snow. So again, just thank you to the student athletes, their determination, perseverance, and their representation of our district. And as you saw tonight, I'm sure we'll see them in the future to congratulate them in person. Just a shout-out, February 15th was the National Police School Liaison Officer Day. So just thank you to those who serve as school liaison officers, their dedication. We have high school liaison officers, Adam Deleschi, Kent Olson, Nick Raddus, who does a little bit of swing between Badger and Silverbrook as well, to support Officer Jason Donath. So again, thank you to those officers and our collaboration with our community. And while we don't have an official liaison officer from Jackson, the Jackson Police Force is present every day at our school, whether it's supporting crossing guards, coming through, having lunch with kids. So just a thank you to all of our officers who engage in our schools consistently. Talking about the orchestra, the symphony will be back in West Bend. Next Tuesday, February 28th, the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra is holding a youth concert for all 4th and 5th grade students in all schools in West Bend. So we welcome private parochial school partners for that, and it's great to fill an auditorium with all the students in the community. And that is from the generous contributions of the Columns organization. They sponsor the event for all their students and the volunteers who helped make that success. I think Mr. Ongert helps coordinate volunteers, so if you need any volunteers, do you need any still?
Probably not. We got a lot, but it's...
All right. I was going to say, this is your opportunity.
It's a great show.
Congratulations to Karen Wasaki, a music teacher at Green Tree, for winning a certificate of excellence in general music from Civic Music of Milwaukee. It's an organization that highlights music education. Karen taught choir at East and West for 30 years before retiring, and then she unretired to come and serve and teach music at Green Tree since 2020. So thank you for her commitment, passion, and clearly, her excellence in the profession. Another great community partner is the Rolfs Education Foundation. Just a note to everyone, board members, public, staff, each year, the Rolfs Education Foundation awards four classroom and special services teachers with recognition. We can't thank the Rolfs Education Foundation enough for their sponsorship. It's a very prestigious award. It's in confidence. We're going out in surprising staff members. It's a really fun occasion. So those are in conjunction with our district awards for support staff professionals. So those nominations are now being accepted. So take a look at our website. All of those are due by March 17th. Again, see our website or reach out to us at District Office. Anyone can make a nomination for a staff member. Just again, making sure you're aware of that deadline being March 17th. And another, just congratulations and a thank you to our district. We participated as a pace setter organization in the 2022 United Way Campaign Team Celebration. You can see a whole team made the front cover. That was us packing meals. And then, just a highlight, they were shouting out one of the highest increases in total dollars raised by an organization. Second was us. We increased our contributions in the thousands. So, thank you to our staff members. You know, we hear a lot about inflation and all those things, but that spirit of giving to our community and the programs that it represents for our students and our families, just nothing but gratitude for our connection with United Way and how they serve, and a thank you to all of our staff who supported that. That's all I had for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Wimmer on her report? Thank you. We'll move forward then with action items and number of policy items to take up. As we'd said earlier today, nepotism policy is going back to the policy committee, so they're not, that policy is not nested in these action items. But let's start with the policy third reading for review. Superintendent Wimmer?
Correct. The 7A item are those in the third reading, so you can take action tonight. Those are the ones that had revisions. You can see kind of, like you said, that shorthand version of the policy number, as well as what was the highlight. And then that PDF shows you exactly in markup format, either green, meaning new language, or red, meaning strike-through language, around those policies and those pieces. So barring any further question, we'd be happy to have anyone make a motion on those.
Questions on the policies? I move to approve the revision of the policies from the 300 and 400 series as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
John, that was you?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Motion and second to approve the policies as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Zweiger votes yes. Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
And Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. We move then to the next item, which is policy third reading for review.
Correct. These are policies that represent a review, and there were no, no real changes to those, so we would just go on record as it being formally reviewed, so that the cycle was updated.
Motion to approve the review of policies 455.2 parking and 460 awards and scholarships.
Sir, second.
Second.
Thank you, Nancy. Motion and second to approve the review as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Zweiger votes yes. Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
And Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. We move to policy third reading for removal.
Correct. Upon review, we recommend removal. They're either taken care of in other policies or unnecessary. So barring further question, you could make a motion to that effect.
Any questions?
Motion to remove policies 444, 451, and 459.
Second.
Thank you. These were policies, interesting enough, written in 1974. And a couple of them are only a couple of sentences long. That probably made a lot of sense back then, but not really necessary anymore.
All right, we have a motion and a second to remove these policies. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zweiger votes yes. Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
And Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously as well. And now, policy second reading.
Correct. The next slate are no further recommendations on a couple of them, recommendations for revision and policies from removal. We've had a first reading already with the full board. Just a reminder that once there's a second reading, if the full board has unanimous approval, you can make that at the second reading, so just calling attention. Or you could instead defer this to a third reading. It's really the board's choice on that. So there's some different pathways. You can move to approve that review as presented for the slate for review, revision, and removal. You could make your motions separately, or you could have discussion regarding having a third reading on a future agenda. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of your opportunity.
I will make a motion to approve the review of policies 453.1 and 458.
Second. Motion and second to accept as reviewed policies 453.1 and 458.
Just in an effort to try to get something accomplished on this item, that one, in my opinion, should be fairly easy, because there's no changes to these policies. We're just recognizing review and that they're up to date.
Final discussion. Hearing none, we'll call the roll. Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Zweiger votes yes. Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to policy 424, 453, 453.11, 453.3, 453.36, 453.4, 453.41, 453.9, and 656.
Second. Motion and second to revise policies. Do I need to read them again? Why not?
You don't need to read them.
All right. Revised policies is listed.
These were policies, a lot of them related to student health, procedures, you know, things like AEDs in buildings and infectious diseases, student allergies. The last one was on student fees with, if you remember, we talked about quite a bit as a full board, if I remember right, on student fees and kind of some of those changes. So, I can't speak for the policy committee, but I personally, as a member of the committee, would recommend approval of these.
Any additional discussion?
Can I just ask one question?
Of course.
The one about the removal of the policy references about the homework, I think it was, 453.36. I was just curious why that would be, part would be removed, like allowing kids that are ill to be able to make up their work, or, you know, is that just something that doesn't need to be covered by a policy, or is it?
It's located in the instructional series policies with the ability to make up absent work. So it was a redundant cross-reference. Yep, we would make that accommodation to students who are absent for a variety of reasons.
Great. Thank you for the question. Other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Zweiger votes yes. Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to remove policy 452 and policy 470.
Second. Motion and second to remove two policies, 452 and 470. And I believe these are duplicates, essentially.
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate. Looks like 470 was moved to 4, or 656.
Correct. With your action just prior, thank you, John. That was a good catch. So when we removed that 470, we updated the language. It was around student fees. It became 656. So again, you don't want a competing policy in play, and wellness was a duplicate of the one already approved, so.
Excellent. Any additional discussion?
Sorry if I wasted everyone's time by taking these separately, but we did generate some good discussion on them, so that's what's important.
Excellent. All right. Hearing no additional discussion, I will call the roll. Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Zweiger votes yes. Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
And Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
That motion also passes unanimously. Thank you for moving through those. So, I believe that takes us to future agenda items and board meeting calendar. I must have missed one here. Policy second reading. Nope, we're good. As soon as my computer catches up. All right. So we have four upcoming meetings to announce, all taking place here at the Education Service Center on February 21, Curriculum Committee, 8:30 a.m., and the Policy Committee meeting, February 23 at 4:00 p.m. And then our next two regular board meetings, beginning at 5:30 p.m., both dates, March 6 and March 20. Any questions on the board calendar? Any items for follow-up and communication?
I just have one item. I just wanted to point out openly mocking public speakers is inappropriate and against board policies. Point of order should have been called earlier.
Superintendent Wimmer, maybe we can follow up to get specifics on that. Thank you. Any other items? Hearing none, we've come to the end of our planned agenda. I would move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Sir.
Thank you. Joel, motion and second to adjourn. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll to adjourn. Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Zweiger votes yes. Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
And Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.